Amendment could vote on a final read or a final approval of the ordinance tonight.
Mr. McClung.
So, in essence, if one of the council people wished to make a motion to amend, then they need to do so now, or we go ahead and vote and be done with it.
That's correct.
Mr. Mitchell.
So, do we need to vote on what Mrs. Zeller mentioned? Or we just nod our head? Or we just move on? What are we doing?
I'm still trying to discuss.
Yeah, the point of order is addressed by the head of the table, the chair of the table.
Okay.
To allow Ms. Snyder's request, the council needs to vote to allow it to go to the mic between Mr. McAvoy and Mr. Levine for discussion, as she requested. That's basically what you're going to be doing, is approving her request to amend it before you...
No, I want to discuss it. I don't want to amend it necessarily.
Okay.
I mean...
So, it's just discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. So, there's no amendment? Well, I want to make sure we get all this straight.
It's just discussion.
Right. So, there's no questions? Okay. So, the question is, will the council vote to allow Ms. Snyder's discussion with Mr. McAvoy? Because we've got a point of order that we had to deal with, and Mr. Weaver said, "The council has to approve your request for discussion."
Did you say there, did you say that we...
That you would have to vote to approve or disapprove of her point of order. They either have to all agree, or at least four of them agree, that the point of order is correct, and that would stop discussion. If they don't get four votes for the point of order, then discussion goes on.
Does everybody understand Ms. Zeller's point? Okay. All in favor of Ms. Zeller's point, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
So, we've got three, two? Okay. All right. So, discussion is allowed.
Discussion is allowed.
Did you vote yes or no?
Two, two.
I didn't vote.
Two, two, and one.
I need to hear it again when I'm voting. I was distracted.
We'll let the clerk read it back from the record.
The point of order...
Point of order, that the item is not on the agenda, and to bring this up now is adding something to the agenda. So, it's not appropriate.
We're voting on point of order.
Yeah.
Do you want discussion? Joyce is saying she does not want discussion, so your vote is yes or no to her suggestion?
No.
Okay. So, that's three.
Discussion's fine.
Yes, you do want discussion.
Sure. That's what we're supposed to do.
It's two, three.
Two, three.
Thank you.
Okay.
But you were right.
It's one of those little tricky things we've got to take care of, just for the record, because it'll reflect it all in the minutes next time. Okay. So, we do allow discussion. Is that what the council wants to hear?
Yes.
Okay. Who do you want to talk to first?
I'd like to have Bruce come up first.
Mr. Levine.
If you'll look at the packet that I gave you...
Wait, wait, wait.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Now, what we've been having is this little triangle of land here. Can you see that little green thingy?
Correct.
Okay. And what y'all want to do, or want us to...
Ms. Zeller, I get you one of these packets?
Huh?
I was asking Ms. Zeller if I'd got her one of those.
I think everybody's got one. Anyway, what you...
I have.
What y'all would like to do is to delete the green triangle, right? Which is Klein, I believe? Whatever. Anyway, you want to delete the triangle, right?
Correct.
That's what your survey's saying. So, my question is, rather than square off, so to speak, the end of McCune, where this road goes through, with the triangle there, traffic could still go through.
If my recollection of how that all lays, and Mr. McAvoy can verify that or not, is that's off the hill, and that little triangle, although maybe referred to as a scrap, it gives us an opportunity to make a full pedestrian easement through there. The reason I put the mini-colored map in there was to show that I can certainly see where there was an error that I may well have made by not making it absolutely clear what our intention was, since we recommended McCune to be vacated. We had no problems with McCune whatsoever. The map that I made, I can see where there may have been an error, or it may have been interpreted to go differently. When I finally got a chance to see what was being proposed, which was not until the Friday before the second reading, did I try and bring something up at the second reading to ask for this to be put on again. So, I took the liberty of having that piece, that triangle, taken out of a new description describing the McCune portion. It was done by a registered surveyor.
Okay. So, you say this is on, basically on the side of a mountain? So, it's not like a street, a proper street, a drivable street? It's a...
No, not that area of McCune. We were fully behind vacating McCune.
And just out of curiosity, because this is getting really confusing, how big is that little triangle? Like, you know, that part of the road, this whole side of the road? Give us a general idea. In other words, it's obviously not going to block the street or the walkway?
No, no. And I don't know if it's 40 feet by 20 feet.
Okay. Or two feet by four feet?
No, it's bigger than that. But it squares off, and that was our intention originally, when we recommended to vacate McCune Street. That was our intention.
To end it at that one spot?
Correct.
Okay.
And since I could certainly see where it could be misinterpreted, we went ahead and paid the freight for another description to be added to, if that's what council wishes to do.
Well, it's not going to block a walkway, right?
No, and I probably should just turn this over to Mr. McAvoy, since he can tell you where...
Okay, well, that's the part that I wanted from you.
To my knowledge, it has no effect on that. It does affect our easement through there.
In what way?
Part is that it constricts our easement through, the city's easement through.
Okay. So, instead of being like this, one section would be in?
Right. It would be constricted.
Okay. Okay. And then I would...
And like I say, I don't think there's anything nefarious that's going on here. It's just a matter of not knowing.
Eureka.
Yeah. And I never saw that easement agreement until the second reading or right before.
Okay. Then I'd like to have Jim come up.
Can I disagree?
Okay. And have you seen the differences in the two?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
I'm Jim McAvoy, 18 Chestnut Street, Eureka Springs.
Okay.
Just in case anybody wanted to know.
Okay. So, when they squared this off, what does that mean to you and your property?
Well, I am opposed to it because that... I am opposed to it for several different reasons, and my first one being that at your last council meeting, this memo was handed out from the Parks Department by Mayor Pate, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, it was. I'm glad you saw it.
Yeah, it was given to me to hand out.
Yes.
Yes.
And the letter reads, "Please find a map of the original vacation request and a map showing Parks and Tended Line that marks the end of the McCune Street vacation. This property is off down the hill and should not affect the applicant's situation. If all parties are in agreement on this principle, we will have a surveyor make the necessary change to this description in time for the last reading. He apologized for any inconvenience this may cause." First of all, our original, and I checked with my attorney, our original request was to have that, it reads adjacent to our property on Lot 5, which is on Block 123. That was our original vacation request, and the map that was put in here by Parks is, this is not my original vacation request. This is a map drawn out by Parks Department. So, therefore, it is a very small piece of land.
This is the original.
This green triangle, that Bruce is asking for you to put an amendment in on this, and you can clearly see that there is 15 feet through. This would not affect a trail in any way, shape, or form. The alleyway that's along the backside of my lots, 1 through 5, is 15 feet as wide also. And then, there's only 15 feet of Hartman that's available to drive to when you come in off of Cross or Amity Street, which a lot of people think it is. So, actually, it's 15, 15, 15, and then the road turns to 30 feet going down the hill. So, I don't understand why Bruce would be interested in causing me any inconvenience whatsoever, because I provided all of this stuff to the City Council. It's been voted on twice already for approval, and I'd asked that you please do not consider his request, because I don't think it's fair. It's not going to hurt anything. Rather than it being squared off like that, it would be nice to have a fence to go across there, rather than have, you know, a zigzag through there, the way he is proposing that he would like it done. And to my knowledge, there's no good reason why it could not be read the way it's been read for the last two times tonight, because this just doesn't make any sense to me, and I... I find it really kind of rude, actually, from the Parks people. I just, I don't get it. I've done everything that the city has asked me to do. I provided the legal description, which to my knowledge has not been asked in the past by anyone. I provided that and a map, and paid for that out of my pocket, to provide to the city exactly what the request was. And Bruce, I feel, is picking this apart by asking you to amend this. I don't get it. I really would like for Bruce to concentrate on that 15 feet of missing Hartman Street more than this little corner over here that doesn't really matter.
Mr. Mitchell.
So, based on this memo was March 24th? So, did you talk to Bruce sometime around this time, so that you were aware of this memo?
No.
It was coming?
I was watching the meeting from home, and I filled out a Freedom of Information Act. I believe it was you that I spoke with, that she was kind enough to provide me with the information, because I just heard over the TV that it was concerning McCune Street vacation, and I thought, I didn't understand. So, I came down here. Well, I did not hear from Bruce until Wednesday of this last week, and he was very vague over the phone and said, "Oh, I just had a couple copies. I was going to email to you." And I said, "Could you just send them to my house?" And that's what he did. And I just received that on Friday.
So, my next question, then, so you weren't in agreement with Parks Department, then, on the principle of this, before the survey was taken? Has there been a survey of this little corner, I guess, since then, to change the legal description?
I did not authorize. I do not agree with it.
Okay. I'm just clarifying the memo.
Okay. I had Ram McKenny do the map and the legal description, and he had hired unbeknownst to me, a completely different surveyor to write what he wanted written.
Thank you.
You have further?
Just a question to Bruce. Mr. Levine, if we go forward and approve this as it's currently set up, what's the negative impact? I mean, you guys, can you still, you've still got 16 feet of room. You won't have 30 feet. I mean, I'm looking at it right here. You've got 16 feet of room to access around that corner, but you won't have the 30 feet, which is what the width of the street is. You cut a diagonal between those two points, and you get about 16 feet.
I think it affects us. Whenever you're working on a hill, you need that for switchbacks. I guess this is turning into a little more than I thought it was going to be, whether this is a matter of principle or not. I think there was just an error made here. And like I say, I didn't, since we made the recommendation, I can't stress that enough, we recommended McCune to be vacated, just as we recommended, two years ago, an area of McCune that we did on a hasty basis, because Mr. McAvoy had a loan that he wanted to take, and he needed. So, we did a small triangle. Maybe it's a little smaller, maybe it's a little bigger. So, I don't see where this is, should be, a problem. There's nothing nefarious. There's no attempt at anything to disrespect anyone. It's something that happened. Fortunately, I caught it. So, in answer to your question, we'd like to have that. Obviously, the last thing I want to do in the world is to be here and have to argue for something.
Thanks, Bruce. Could I continue? Mr. McAvoy, if we... If this property could be conveyed the way Mr. Levine wants it to be, to add more flexibility for any pathways or whatever, hiking trails, and it did not cause any further delay, would you be amenable to that? If it could be amended tonight, we could have a third reading, and if that's possible, would you be amenable to that?
No. I would like it to be as I stated it originally. I don't want an amendment put on there. Please.
I mean, if it has, if it... Your main objection is that you don't want to spend any more legal fees or any delay this any further? If it does not encumber you in any way?
It doesn't encumber me, or it doesn't encumber Bruce. So, why can't it just be what it...
Well, I'm just, what I'm saying is, this is a vacation that we're proceeding. This is...
Right.
This was Parks' property. It's now the city's property. We, you know, we... Now, what we want, are we vacating? Yes, we're vacating now. So, this would be the final. So, you know, the city is giving you this property, and I think what Bruce is saying is that he'd like to see some sort of flexibility there, and just in case that hillside is not accessible, and that 16 feet that we see here on the paper, if it's like that, you know, it may not be accessible. I don't know that that's the case, but, I mean, would you be amenable? I'm just trying to...
I would rather not. No. Please.
And I don't know that that's possible. Is that possible, Mr. Attorney?
You could absolutely amend your ordinance to change the definition, if you wish.
Have you reviewed this?
I have not seen that particular description, nor would I be able to tell you how it lay, if I did. I'm not a surveyor. But assuming that what Mr. Levine has told you is correct, that he's had a surveyor that has made that correction to the description, all you would do is substitute one description for the other.
Well, but then that, Mr. McAvoy has paid his attorney to review that description, provide that description, provide it to you, to get your approval for it, to come forward to this council, this table, at this point in time. And you think this would cause a delay?
I would not see why it would, because the discretion I had with his attorney was that neither of us, to my knowledge, have any ability to read that survey beyond a normal person. We are neither one surveyors. We read the ordinance for the ordinance purposes, not for what dirt it actually describes.
Can I say something? On, when I had spoke with Bruce last week, he had told, mentioned to me that he did not copy my attorney on this, Jim Crouch from Springdale. He didn't copy him on that, because he wanted to save him money, or he wanted to save myself money from attorney's fees. And I had asked that, requested that a letter from my attorney be put into all of your mailboxes today, which was his response to this, which I thought was very important, actually.
Okay. Here, he's stating that we had a legal description done at the request of the city attorney. The description is consistent with what we requested from the city.
This is taking up a lot of time, and what we're arguing about is a little scrap of land that is, well, it's 30 feet on the two short sides. It's a right triangle, so it would be 30 feet by 30 feet by 60 feet. And I don't see why we're wasting time on this. Why don't we just go ahead? Parks doesn't need this land. It just occurred to them as an afterthought, and I just would like to get on with this and vote with this, and get it off the agenda.
Make a motion.
So...
We've already got a motion to approve.
Okay.
For a discussion on it?
Yes. And I'm going to be brief. I just wanted to give Parks a chance to state the case, give Mr. McAvoy a chance to either accept or reject that. At this point, I don't see that it encumbers Parks enormously. You know, we're giving Mr. McAvoy this little triangle of property that our Parks Director would like to have. You know, our lawyer doesn't think that it would be objectionable to add it as an amendment to this. I don't, you know, I think we probably should give some consideration of that. We've taken, we've taken quite a bit from Parks jurisdiction on this one property, and that if this has no... The problem I have with this is that we're not getting definitive answer from, I'm not picking on you, but we're not getting definitive answer as to whether this is a fit legal description to attach to this ordinance. So, I think I'm in favor of passing it as it sits currently right now.
You have for a discussion of Mr. McAvoy and Mr. Levine? Mr. Levine, you got anything?
You have a surveyor's mark, I mean, that guarantees his workmanship.
Okay. Mr. Levine has...
Just one answer to a question. This was not an afterthought by the Parks and Recreation Commission, nor is it an afterthought of mine. It is, it is a first thought of one of your city commissions, who is making a recommendation. This isn't me. This is, the Parks Commission is making this recommendation of this piece of land, and it is the first thought, not an afterthought. This was what we attempted to recommend to the City Council to vacate voluntarily, and the Parks Commission hopes that it represents a good deal, many of people. The person who is asking for this vacation and asking for this small piece of land is representing themselves and is only doing this for their own benefit. We hope your Parks and Recreation Commission is acting on the behest of a great many people. So, let me just leave you with that. Thank you.
All right, gang. We have a motion on the table to amend it before the third reading?
No, the motion is to approve on the third reading.
Okay. Any further discussion before we go to it? Okay. The Bureau of Commerce comes since the third.
Ms. Snyder? Ms. Snyder?
Oh, God.
Come back to her.
Come back to me.
Yeah.
I don't know. Seriously, come back to me.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Mitchell.
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Zeller?
Hmm?
What is your vote on the approval of for the third reading?
Oh, yes. Let's approve it. Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perkeypile?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Present.
401.
I can see both sides too well.
Okay. Don't correct me again, please.
Don't start doing what the clerk's got, because I don't think you'll be okay.
Trying to move it along, Ms. Clerk. Okay? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay. Have a good day. All right. Moves us on to number two, which, if I'm reading correctly, states this postponement until May the 12th. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
All right. So, that's one we didn't catch while we were on the postponement. So, it moves us to number five, discussion of increasing water insurance rates, Ms. Snyder and Mr. Mitchell. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor's open. Mr. Mitchell.
This isn't so much about, I think, increasing, but after our workshop, when we discovered a lot of information that our very capable Director of Finance brought to us, and we had the opportunity to visit with the Director of Public Works and get quite a bit of very, very valuable information, and it looked like, at that time, that there was an opportunity to assess the flow of water from the towers to the lines, the accuracy of our meters, and therefore potentially recover a tremendous amount of water, which would, in turn, recover quite a bit of money for us. I thought we were waiting and were supposed to hear something at the end of the march about a timeline, about an assessment of the lines from the towers to there, and then which meters that Public Works was recommending, and that we had identified a source of funds that was available, as our Director of Finance told us, so that we could start the process of replacing very inadequate water meters, and then come up with a timeline for replacing other water meters in the city. And that timeline would be pretty valuable to us, and I must be missing something, because I haven't heard anything.
Mr. Burke, though.
Well, I passed this letter out to everybody, gave everybody a copy, from Public Works Director, Dwayne Allen. And he, that was March 24th, and he gave us an update of what was going on. And in that, he indicated that, he gave us some percentage rates of the large meters that needed to be replaced, 80% rate of replacement. He also, at that point in time, due to billing, changes in billing error, or he called them billing errors, but changes in billing, we're going to result in $60,000 increase in revenue this year. So, he's given us, Public Works has given us an update right now. I think at this point in time, we need to probably schedule, I think what we left this at, is we need to schedule another workshop with our Public Works Director, so we can sit down and say, "Okay, we know we're going to save some money here with billing. We know that 80% of the big users need to be replaced. We need to have a plan of action, and let's try to get something going with that."
Ms. Snyder.
I don't remember where I got the info from, but didn't we have one of the big water tank tests a couple weeks ago? You know, the one that was supposed to be done at like 2:00 in the morning? Does anybody know anything about it?
Okay. My understanding is Dwayne did do a pressure test on all the tanks, and I think he identified the one over on East Mountain, and I, this is, this is just recollection, it's not from him, as the only one that had an issue. Is that... I'm sorry? Okay. It may have been Roark Road. We've got three, four towers, that I understand. Yes, sir.
I concur that I think that this all should be, should all be done in a workshop. And that way, we can get that information from him and all the tests. And I think we're a little premature on discussing the increase of the water insurance rates at this time. I really do.
Okay.
Well, that's just kind of what we're working on.
Yes. I think we do need to change that title, because... Yes, I think we do need to change that title, because it's misleading to the public, so with our topic and...
We're working on it. I mean, he's working on it, Finance Director's working on it, and we're certainly trying to do whatever we can to not have to increase anything.
And I think he has changed some of the top 100 meters also, commercial meters. And oh, they got the one fished at the Crescent Hotel.
Are they long enough that we can get a workshop so we can get updated information or anything?
That part I can't answer, I don't know. Just, so is there a motion to do a workshop now?
Yes, sir, I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of the workshop, say aye. Any opposed? Workshop, okay.
Can we schedule it now, or do you have to talk to him? Then we'll have to talk to Dwayne.
I think y'all go ahead and schedule it, we're just working into it. Any ideas on what it might be, or we just let you on over email?
Have to be after the 12th of May then? Yes. After the May 1st.
Yes, sir. I'd also like to request that our Finance Director be present too. Very helpful.
PW Finance?
So it'd be...
Probably first week and then second week.
Okay.
Okay, nothing further on that one, moves us to number six. Motion to discuss.
Second.
Floor's open. The third read on ordinance 2189. Mr. Mitchell?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2189 by title only on its third reading.
Second.
Mr. Mclennan?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Ms. Elder?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
5-0. Okay. 2189. An ordinance amending chapter 8.48 of the municipal code pertaining to parking for the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas.
Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 2189.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's the third.
Third reading.
Okay, third reading.
Yes.
Ms. Elder?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
5-0.
That moves us on to new business, number one yard waste, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor's open. Ms. Snyder?
I don't know how much James has managed to find out or do. I haven't had a whole lot of time myself, but I have done some checking, and it seems like what we're gonna, we're gonna have to do something that we're, the people go out and mow the lawns and whatnot, and all it is is environmentally safe grass clippings and things like that. We've gotta find a place to put these kind of things. Now, they decompose, and they go back into the ground, and it's all natural stuff. So my thought was, but I'm not sure, Mr. Attorney, who we have to talk to, my thought was, as many ravines and hillsides, I mean, I've even got like a quarter of an acre like that, as many ravines and hillsides as we have around here, both city-owned and privately-owned, why this couldn't be used to dump strictly the yard waste, meaning grass clippings and whatnot? Is that something the city would have to approve, or is it something that they would contact private people and say, you've got this big old hillside going nowhere, can we use it? You know, how would we go about doing something like that?
If the city was to do it, and if it was going to be done by a commercial enterprise, most likely you would have to get approval with the federal government. Depending on the watershed of the valley, there might even have to be an environmental study.
For grass clippings?
Well, you're not talking about just grass clippings, because you're taking them off of people's lawns, and people medicate, for lack of a better term, their lawns. And so those grass clippings also have fertilizing agents and other things in them that could potentially create a problem, especially in the limestone karst areas we have in Arkansas.
What if we had, could we do some kind of a document thing that they would sign saying they have not treated their land in the last five years? I mean, like, I never have. But I mean, would something like that be feasible? If someone wants to give their property for this use, not give it away, but, you know, let people use that?
I would still think it would need to be investigated whether we have to get approval. I don't know for certain, but I think we would have to at least look into that issue before you could safely say they could just start dumping it into one of the ravines.
Even if it's on private property?
Even if it's on private property.
Federal government?
Mr. Mitchell?
Would it be possible, Mayor, aren't you on that?
Solid Waste Committee.
Solid Waste. Would it be possible for you to just ask the folks out there their recommendation of what we might accomplish?
Solid Waste, yes, I could probably address that right now. Solid Waste does not deal with yard waste on the city side. We have a dump site that's available, I think, from 8 to 4 on Wednesdays out there, and it has to be specific items that can be chipped. It can't be vines, it can't be bamboo, it can't be leaves, all those have been tried to be taken out there. Some have been taken out there and dumped, which, that issue was addressed also. All of that's EPA, AD/eq regulated. We can't burn without a permit, we can't do this without a permit or that without a permit. So just taking and dumping on somebody else's property may get into this Clean City issue too. You're trying to clean stuff up, but then you're dumping, dumping on private property too. So it's kind of a multifaceted problem that I know that Dwayne deals with on a daily basis. But I think like limbs and stuff that can actually be chipped is what he requires, what the state requires, and the feds require, be the only thing dumped solid waste-wise at our dump site, our processing site. Yes, ma'am?
Well, I understand with my conversation I had with Jack Byrne, who does a lot of contract landscaping around town, that the real critical issue is that landscapers have no place to take their stuff. And they had been dumping it, they had been taking it out to the recycling center, as I understand.
That's what we're just talking about.
And they allowed it to compost, and then they mixed it, it was kind of a joint operation with the city sewer plant. They mixed it with the waste from the sewer plant and made kind of a fertilizer out of it that they were able to sell, and now for some reason they can't do that anymore because there's some sort of government regulation?
Regulations always change.
Yeah, and so this is really a critical matter, and if we're discussing the Clean City ordinance, we have to be able to tell these people what to do with their waste. As I understand it now, the last time Jack was here, the last City Council meeting, he said, well, what I'm gonna do is put it in bags and put it down by the curb, because I have nothing else to do with it. You can't tell me where to take it.
It won't be picked up.
So I can see we're gonna have a kind of a critical problem here, especially when we start getting rid of that bamboo, this on public property, which is a horrendous fire hazard, which worries me every time I go down Ciner Street. This is a problem, this is pretty critical problem.
Ms. Snyder?
Would it be maybe possible to get ahold of Jerry Landau, who's very much into the composting and recycling of natural stuff, and see if he can come up with any ideas? Either talk to him, have him come, have a workshop, whatever, see what he could come up with, because we're talking environmental compost. I mean, really, that's what we're talking about. Do we get ahold of him, see what he thinks or says?
As the city?
Well, that's what I'm asking. That's what I'm asking, should we, the council?
I think your issues inside the city are gonna be addressed by this Clean City ordinance that you're trying to pass.
We need a location, though.
I know.
Well, that doesn't...
The regulations inside the city are the same, no matter where the site is.
But we don't have anything in there in regards to where to take this stuff?
That's the whole issue, yes, ma'am, it's in it.
So are you saying we need to be adding that to it?
If it's inside the city, it's under the same regulations that the dump site is now.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
If it's inside our city.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, regardless of where it's at.
So should we talk to Jerry or not, or as a person or as a council?
You can do whatever you want to as an individual. Council has to vote on to do anything. Yes, ma'am, yes, sir?
I believe that because we are adding to the, I was gonna say, well, yeah, adding to the problem, we're restricting things more by this Clean City ordinance, so it's gonna cause it to be removed on more of a regular basis. It seems like it should be in our, it should be our responsibility to provide a place. I don't know if other cities do that for that kind of thing or not. I'm guessing they probably do, I don't know. I checked into it.
This is something you might wanna have a workshop on, just to have everybody who deals with this come in and tell you exactly what you can and can't do?
Yeah, I could agree with that.
Because if it's gonna become a major issue, which it could very well do so, if it's not there now.
Yeah, I make a motion. We can schedule a workshop.
Second.
Okay, okay. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, workshop.
It'd be one we probably would wanna publish in the paper too, so we make sure that Jack and the others have a chance to...
Okay.
No?
Mayor?
Yes?
Could we also invite our Solid Waste, Carroll County Solid Waste folks to discuss rules, regs?
Yeah, Carroll County Solid Waste doesn't mess with it.
Okay.
This is all on the city.
Okay.
All that is, is we own the property where the Carroll County Waste Building is, and so we still have a site to dump, but it's only regulated by, I mean, it's only on a Wednesday X number hour.
Okay, who can provide the regulations that have obviously changed? Could be Dwayne?
Okay, so if, yeah, I mean, we can see what's required or what the state allows through all those departments, and how much of that we can use out there and for what, and if we wanna fill a hollow with it.
And let me step back one step and say, if there is anything on the county side, then I'll find it for you and you'll have it.
Okay.
All right.
Sir. Thank you, sir.
Okay, if nothing else on that matter, it brings us to number two, discussion of the May 26 meeting date, is that?
Yes.
Is that how we put it on? Okay.
Motion to discuss, second.
Floor's open. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so in May, we have our council meetings on the 12th and on the 26th. The 26th is Memorial Day, so we need to reschedule that meeting. You wanna go a week before, couple days later?
Yeah, I think first you probably need to find why you need to reschedule it.
I'm not gonna go through this stuff again like we did with Veterans Day. I will not argue with May of 1868 in regards to, this is the day we honor.
Okay.
And I don't mean by sitting here. So, I'm open to any time we want to reschedule.
I think the council needs to probably discuss that and vote on it, instead of a single issue. Floor's open.
I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
It is almost impossible to have council meetings a week apart in terms of the turnaround time required for giving you a good set of minutes notifying the press. A week span is, it doesn't work.
That's why I said a week for a couple of days.
Well, I just wanna let you know, logistically, it...
Yes.
Doesn't, who is it that meets on Tuesday? Is that...
Planning.
Planning.
No, we've done a special one on a Wednesday before, or I mean, moved to Wednesday.
Does anybody, is anybody using this room on Wednesday?
The 28th.
28th.
HDC does weeks opposite.
The 28th, though, is not, that may be presently scheduled for an HDC.
Okay.
It's the fourth.
I mean, well, if in deference to Memorial Day and our one council person and our vets, you know, I'd like to make a motion that we change that date to the Wednesday, the 28th.
I'll second that.
Mr. McClun?
Is, does that work? Does that day work?
Yes, they just said it was clear.
Oh, okay. Second.
I already did.
Any further discussion on May the 28th? All in favor, say aye.
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 6 o'clock, May 28th, Wednesday. Moves us on to number three, the Voyeurs issue.
Thank you.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Floor's open. Yes, sir?
I'd like to recognize Mr. Levine.
I was listening to the discussion during comments, and one solution that occurred to me is that if this were considered a temporary structure that was put across, and it was determined that when it was no longer needed, it would be taken down, then I can't see where anyone would have any problem with it. I'm talking for Parks, I'll mention it's at the commission meeting, but due to the gravity of the situation, I can't see where anybody would have a problem with it.
Thanks, sir. That sounds good.
Yes, sir.
In that regard, I'd like to make a motion that we allow the Voyeurs to have a temporary platform or walkway between the two buildings to allow wheelchair or walker access that's safe.
I'll second.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mitchell?
It would be good if they would just consult with the Chair, Planning, or something to be sure the structure is safe and acceptable, not something, just for safety.
Mr. McClun?
It needs to be some type of written agreement.
It does.
And it needs to be with some wordage for termination, whether, you know, upon Mr. Voy- Mr. Voyager's death or something, or his inability, or his being moved to a facility where he'll not be needed anymore, something of that nature.
Liability and stuff. I'd like to make an amendment, if possible, to the motion that, whatever the motion was now, the wording was, that the city attorney draft an agreement between the Voyeurs and the city that covers implementation date, discontinuance date, and...
Liability.
Termination and any other legal concerns that our attorney may have.
Yes, ma'am, come in with your mind, please.
As a temporary and an end date, I do also have to recognize that I have a stepmother that, should she be physically unable to use her downstairs, that would need to also be able, so somehow it would be as long as there is possibly the need because of mobility and ADA issues, that they would be able to use it.
I think we could leave that with the, up to the city attorney and them to work on, no?
If you're, the longer you're stretching this, the more tenuous this becomes, because the, what you have here is technically, right now, that jurisdiction is still in Parks's hand. Parks has, through Mr. Levine, has said, we're not going to oppose that, but technically you're setting a precedent that you're not taking it back from Parks, but you're still ruling over it. And you're leaving it all open-ended. You are kind of giving the city... You are kind of giving the city attorney the power to do something with land that only actually this table could do.
So, what if we did it a short period of time, and then we work on the reclaim, so that allows Mr. Voyager now to be, have access across, and then that we fix it better later?
Well, we would.
No, I do wanna make one comment, is I've got pictures here. Parks has never done a thing to take all the brush off these steps to get anything, but leave it in a, we can always make it with access for, if this path would ever used, you know, with continued, but I, all we do, if we will be glad to have any temporary access that we can, and then if later, it would be to the best advantage of everybody, um, maybe it's vacating an alleyway that's hasn't, doesn't, I don't know that it's gonna be used, since I hear of vacation processes, but it seems that that would be a very big process, and we don't have time for that at this time.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, isn't, this is something that is on Parks' land. I understand Parks owns that, that piece of property that you wanna...
It's called a city, it's an alley.
It's an alley.
Okay, but it's, but is it one that Parks has jurisdiction over, like Rock Street or something?
That's what Mr. Levine gave his okay.
Okay, so, if, this is, this something that Parks should simply do, if they had, if they decide that they wanna put a ramp or a walkway on this land, couldn't they just go ahead and do it and, uh, you know, ask maybe for help with the cost of it or something? And I don't even see that we even have to get involved. It's Parks' land, if they wanna put a walkway across a piece of their land, it's their business, and, uh, they make their own agreement with the person who's gonna use it. I don't see why we have to get involved.
Mr. Perkypal?
Well, I don't, you know, I'm speaking from a legal perspective, but I don't think, I don't think, you know, a walkway from one private residence to another private residence, that, that has nothing to do with Parks. All we're doing is crossing over it.
Yeah.
Uh, the question that comes to my mind, though, is, those are elevated houses, correct? And that's, that's a whole issue.
You can, it's actually just two steps down and two steps up, uh, about three steps up. It's, right now, see that, um, white thing across? That's a rope they tied up for my dad two years ago when he fell here and planted his face big time, and then fell another week. So, that's a rope that he holds on to. I've gone in there and actually dug out and flattened the area because it was, the sidewalk was so steep, he was, you know, this was wide, and I've actually dug it out and made a little flat area, poured a little cement.
So, instead of a, a bridge over, could we have just a, a sloped or slanted ramp?
There, it has to go up, see this?
Yes.
That's the entry that we're, house we're getting to, and this is taken from the doorway of the house we're exiting.
Right.
And, so, it would only be as high as, the door that we're exiting is two steps down to the thing, and then it's down, there may be a small, you know, we can't have much of an incline, and then it goes straight to the, the...
Right, I understand.
...level of that house, which is...
But I could see here, just a temporary wooden ramp stepping down out of the, you know, the main house, wouldn't be very long, might even still be within your property, and then, uh, another ramp over where you have three steps up, but, but coming out on your property perpendicular to Bill's, uh, piano house, is what I call it.
Yeah.
And, uh, and coming out over here, and then that way, you're not really encroaching on Parks.
But we can't run a wheelchair, and you can't walk across anything that's not flat, and we have to have handrails.
Right, right, understood, and, uh, but, I mean, there's something there right now. There's something there right now, right? That, that is rock or concrete.
That's the picture of what's there. It's concrete, rocks, um, padding, roots, it's, it's a lot of stuff.
Sure, so, it could be improved, couldn't it?
But you can't get down the back steps of the house with a wheelchair?
Yes, ma'am. And, and what I'm saying is, a ramp down from the back of the house, a ramp up to the back of the house. Ramps on, from each doorway.
But there's still ramps that have to be long enough they'd almost meet, so, the gra, the slope needed for a ramp to come out there. Um, I had a picture about it.
They're using wheelchair.
This is just kinda what we're doing.
He's being moved by a wheelchair, he's not walking.
He's walking right now, but he can make it from about here here.
Well, but you could just decide that you want something, you have to use a wheelchair for it.
We want it ADA accessible.
Well, yeah, it's just something that a wheelchair would work on.
That would be right out this door, and these are almost level, and, so, to do that, there's the height, right there would be the very height of, it above this ground there, it's probably, or it would be about this far off.
So, there is sort of a design and sort of a cost estimate for this thing?
Yeah, I mean, it's...
So, then you could just go to Park District?
We're not asking for any funding for this, we're just like to be in the room.
Yeah, we'll just discuss it with the Park District, is what I'm thinking, you know? I don't see why we have to involve.
You're gonna have to, uh, I mean, you, you gotta have a turn, a point of termination, in whether, you know, it's with Bill or Mrs. Voyager, I mean, that's, you, you have to tie it in like a life estate or something of that nature, because once they're, where they are not able to use the, the property anymore, it's got to go.
Right.
Otherwise, you have just like what you've got all over town, and you've got encroachments, and it's, and it's just gonna get muddied up. So, you know, it has to be real limited in what can be done.
Mr. Mitchell.
I think we had a motion, and then we had an amendment, and then the attorney was concerned about the termination because of the length of the amendment, and said that we might be stretching it too far to be safe. So, with the motion and the amendment as it is, and we didn't, do you want us to put, Mr. Attorney, do you want us to put a termination time in there? Or, are you comfortable with your legalese and knowing the timeframe to, to accomplish that with Parks and, and the Voyager's daughter?
Should we even be a part of this?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Well, you, you either have to be a part of it, or it isn't gonna happen, is what it really amounts to.
So, do we tell you, since, since Parks says they would do it, we say?
Well, technically, technically, you really need to pass at least a resolution that says, "We're taking it back over from Parks temporarily," because a resolution can be temporary in nature. And then you need to give me a timeframe that you want, because if you leave it open-ended, and we say that until someone no longer occupies the structure, it could go through fifty tenants, technically. Now, we don't think it's going to at this table, and it shouldn't, but there needs to be a termination date, and you are the body that leases, sells, rents, whatever city property, so you have to decide what that term is. I can make suggestions, the mayor can make suggestions, the Voyeurs could make suggestions, anybody can make suggestions, ultimately, the six people at this table have to make the decision how long it goes.
Mr. Perkypal?
Well, since it was my original motion, what I'd like to do is to kinda clear this up again, uh, I'd like to move to make it a temporary, uh, um...
Accommodation.
Ramp, it's four feet wide.
Well, structure, temporary structure, provide access between the two buildings for a period of one year, and this is temporary.
Subject to renewal?
That's right. Subject to what?
Renewal.
Renewal.
Approval by the council, yes.
Yes.
Why didn't you just say as long as they're both still living there?
No, for one year, just say one year, and we can proceed after that. This, what we're doing is, we're taking care of it right now.
So, do you wanna withdraw your first motion? I'll withdraw my second, and then make a new one?
Yes, I withdraw the first, he withdraws his second, and now we have a new motion.
Okay. Let, let's hear Mr. McLemus before we make the motion.
Well, go ahead, and, and you can vote on that motion, and then I'll discuss.
Okay.
I may.
Okay. Mr. Weaver, you may.
I, I would like to suggest how you make your motion.
Very good, sir.
That you make a motion, that the council make a, a oral resolution to remove this temporarily from Parks as a green space, and grant your term of one year temporary use over the property to the appropriate entity, being, I guess the owners of the property, because they're the ones that's gonna have to build the structure and tear the structure down.
Okay, I'd like to amend my motion to say exactly what he just said, and I'll second it.
She's writing furiously.
Mr. McLemus.
Okay, so that comes up in one year. Who's gonna remember?
You?
I'll be gone.
You? And what, what if she doesn't?
Would you, eighteen months?
What if she doesn't remember in a year? And then, and whoever's on the council doesn't remember, then it just...
We'll put it on the calendar.
Who takes care of contracts now with renewal dates? Somebody watches them.
Would this be under...
Must be back there by the file cabinet.
Would this be under Parks' thing you'd have to remember, since it's their property?
No, they've already given their approval, unless they withdraw it, then it's not an issue.
Right, but what I'm saying is, would this be under their bailiwick in regards to, they'd have to be the ones to remember?
There, there's your answer.
State it again.
Tell Diane.
Diane watches terminations.
Whoever's there, or whoever's...
Too many people talking at one time. What, what was it?
Does that keep a file?
Yeah, she does.
Whoever's there that sits, my seat can see on the file.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion on it? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Shall I next go to building permits? No, you go, Parks.
No, not Parks. Parks, Parks gave their consent here.
First to Bobby Ray.
She, she has...
No, we already did it.
She has to go before planning or HDC to get the structure built?
Yes.
Okay, Glenn and Buck.
Okay, I'm scheduled for the HDC on Wednesday night, so, then we'll go from there.
That's a good start.
I really, really appreciate y'all's, um, respect and...
Is this yours?
No, I found it on the floor over there.
Okay, it's not mine, so...
Uh, thank you for considering how much to helping make my parents' property accessible, and for them to live happily here where they've come here, to be happy forever.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
That was hard.
Okay. That takes us out on new business, puts into agenda setting, motion to discuss?
So moved.
Okay. Floor is open. Mr. DeBees is out, Mr. McLemus.
Um, I don't think it's really an agenda item, I don't know, it, it may be something that I need to talk to you directly on it, and it's, uh, it's the accessibility of the auditorium for the walking tours. I don't know if that's something we need to discuss here, or...
Uh, you can, you can come see me about it, we'll, yeah. Doesn't really have anything to do with...
Okay, I, I didn't, I didn't think it did, but, but I...
Just come see us.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Anything else?
No, no, that's all.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Mr. Perkypal?
No.
Mr. Snyder?
Um, yeah, I don't know if this is an agenda item or a personal visitor or workshop.
We need to get together with Lonnie in regards to the water meters and the deposits that the ladies were talking about in Pivot Rock, and in general. Cause I don't know if that's an agenda workshop or private, I have no idea.
Water department policy?
We already got a workshop, May the first, that, huh? Okay, okay, that's increase on water rate, sorry.
We can talk about that.
This is probably something that should probably be done here, so the people can get an explanation.
Would that a workshop, the first?
No, no, no.
Well...
Okay, so you request in a workshop?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Why don't we just add that as an, I don't know, discussion for the workshop that we're already doing for the meter replacement?
That's what I was talking about, yeah, I started with.
Which is when? Oh, that's one that's got to be scheduled yet? Oh, okay.
Sometime in the first of...
Okay, now I get the first week.
First week of May. Okay. Anything else besides that? Snyder, anything else besides that?
No, I'm sorry, that was...
Ms. Zeller?
No, I don't have anything.
Counsel comments, Mr. McLemus.
Um, go, thank you.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Mr. Perkypal? Snyder?
Contrary to, uh, information put out in the last few days, starting with me, my son is fine. Little twit did not fall off a tree with a chainsaw and cut his leg off, it was a belated April fool. Anyone who wants a free son, let me know.
Ms. Zeller?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. List of events, April seventeenth through the nineteenth is Thirty-Eighth Annual Springtime in the Ozarks. April eighteenth through the nineteenth is Celebrate Jesus Music and Parade on the weekend. April the twentieth is Happy Easter. April the twentieth is sunrise service at Great Passion Play at seven P.M. Uh, April the twentieth, Easter egg hunt at the Crescent Hotel. April the twentieth, Easter bells parade at two P.M. April the twenty-fifth through the twenty-sixth, the Tenth Annual Carving in the Ozarks. April twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth is the Friends of the NRA banquet in the Ozarks. April twenty-fifth through the twenty-sixth, in yards and yards sales. April twenty-seventh is re-art auction at seven P.M. Do you know where? Okay. Okay, I'll check the website.
Oh, what about the city cleanup date? Do you have that on there?
No.
The garbage pickup?
April twenty-second. Okay. We'll land down here, April twenty-second.
It's the whole week. It's those five days, it starts on the twenty, you have to have your stuff up by the twenty-first.
Is that the one you have to get a permit or you pay somebody or something?
April spring cleanup, okay. I'm glad it didn't snow today.
Yeah, it didn't, it was working a lot.
But we're, we're still not out of May yet, so, uh, anything is very possible. Um, Mr. Levine didn't mention it a while ago, but he had a group of, uh, kids come in, I think it was over a hundred kids, uh, he, he, he said they were Mormon kids, came in, did some cleanup at, at the entrance to the park, uh, Lake Leatherwood Park. Said, "Everybody knows that we have a ongoing Lake Leatherwood master plan and part of this cleanup, cleanup of some underbrush." Uh, if you get a chance to go out there and look at it, it, it's kinda manicuring the entrance of the park from the old highway, you can't see it from the big highway, of course. Uh, go out there and look at it, and it'll give you some idea of what, what we kinda have in mind for the whole entire mile and a quarter, or whatever it is, all the way down to the park, kinda manicure it, leave the big trees, some underbrush, but make it look really nice, make it look like it's not just a jungle that you're driving into. Uh, how this is gonna affect all the other issues that were discussed tonight, I don't know, but they can take that up with Parks. It looks really, really good, and, and I think continuation of that should, uh, should carry on, so. Just my opinion as the mayor, that it's gonna look really nice. That's all I have. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?